Our regular Board of Supervisors meeting, which is scheduled for 10:00 AM and will proceed at 10:20. Thank you for attending. The, today is Tuesday, October 10th. Board of Supervisors Hearing Room 1415 Melody Lane, Building G, Bisbee, Arizona pursuant to ARS 38431-02H. The public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We will begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The order of deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. The Board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We're going to do roll call one more time because it's fun. District 1.
Crossbeach.
District 2.
Supervisor English is present.
And Supervisor John, I am here to represent District 3. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 500-351-243-POUND. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the Clerk of the Board prior to the start of the meeting. Some attachments may have been updated after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at the Board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. We will begin with call to the public and were there some call to the public turned in prior to this meeting but after 10:00 today? Were there a few turned in? Okay. I have a stack, so we'll get through them. And I was just wondering if someone came in a little bit late and turned them in. Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I'm ready. Call to the public. The first one is Alfred Kern. And when you approach the stand, please say your name and your address. Thank you.
Well, I'm sure everybody's seen me up here before. Name is Alfred Kern. I live at 3460 East Greenwash in Douglas. And we still have an issue with my roads. I told Ann English that we had two fires up there and the fire trucks couldn't get up because of up into the mountains where I live at because of the conditions of the road. They kept bottoming out. What has to happen? Does the mountain have to burn down? You know, it, it, it's, it's a situation that needs to be addressed. I don't know how you're going to do it, but Cipriano gets graded almost every week. San Mateo, same thing. Bajor, same thing. My principal hasn't gotten touched in years since, since we had Maddox come and do it. It's, it's a situation of what I, what I said about the fire. What'd you do? Well, you did what you normally do. You did nothing. You know? It needs to be addressed. I don't know how I can make it any clearer. Has anybody here ever gotten a phone call from our supervisors saying, you know, how they're, how they addressed an issue that they've talked about? Because I never have. And I've been talking at the meetings for like 19 months. Twice a month. I never get a response. So it needs to be addressed. I don't know how you're going to do it, but do it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. The next speaker is Allison Morse, and she's joining us on Teams.
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Allison Morse from Porto, and I do thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I'd also like to thank Cochise County employees whose job it is to keep this county running day in and day out, from the Clerk of the Board to IT to elections, from engineering to human resources to public health, and so much more. It takes an incredibly dedicated staff to keep things running smoothly, especially under some less than ideal work environments. Certain personalities can be difficult to work with, and high staff turnover is undoubtedly a challenge. I especially want to thank County Administrator Rich Karwaczka and his deputy Sharon Gilman. They do a fine job of overseeing the many departments under their purview, a job that requires keen oversight, excellent communication skills, and a good measure of diplomacy. I attended my second logic and accuracy test yesterday, and not surprisingly, all went well. Special thanks to Sharon Gilman for taking the time to explain the procedure to those of us who watch the test on video without sound. I'd like to respectfully request that in the future, observers have the opportunity to hear what is going on in the tabulation room when the test is being conducted. It would make for a much more meaningful experience, and I thank you in advance for enabling that to happen. I was pleased to see Supervisor English present for the test. She has attended many LNA tests over the years, and I believe Supervisor Jed has also attended at least one. I don't believe Supervisor Crosby has attended any, however, and as far as I know, I don't think he has toured the elections facility to understand its workings. Why would you cast doubt on our process and spread unwarranted distrust in our election system when you haven't even witnessed it firsthand? Recorder Stevens attended the last LNA test in April and can easily verify the machine's accuracy. Why not go see for yourself Supervisor Crosby and encourage your constituents to observe the process as well? The public is always welcome, as I'm sure you're aware. One last thing. Today is the official last day to register to vote in order to participate in the November 7th election. That is the Wilcox School District and the Benson Hospital District. Our county erroneously posted the deadline as yesterday, October 9th, but the deadline is actually today, October 10th, to register to vote for these elections. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanne, Joanne Anne Murphy. She's also on Teams.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity. I just want to address a topic that's come up and I'm pretty sure is going to be voted on, and that's the use of vote centers. I'm really surprised that this is even going to be discussed as an issue. We've had voting centers since 2015, and they have worked well. I think making this a topic is a disservice to voters because going back to precinct use costs us a lot more money without a, a good side to it, for lack of better words. Voting centers cost less because there were fewer of them. That's fewer places to rent, fewer machines to be disseminated all over the county. And same with supplies and people to run them. They're more convenient. People are used to them. And those that live in one precinct but work somewhere more distant don't have to worry about losing their opportunity to vote. There have been so many moves by certain people in the county to undermine our ability to vote easily and in a secure manner. These voting centers make it easy and are secure. They are a, an experience that we've had a good outcome from, and I don't like the idea of even discussing going back to precincts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Lopez. She's also on Teams. Elizabeth Lopez? On Teams. Are you there?
Hello, my name is Jeff Sturgis. I'm Elizabeth's husband, and her computer's not working. Can she use my computer here?
Okay, bring her over.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Lopez. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I live in Sierra Vista. Our last two county elections directors told us that they left their positions because of a toxic work environment where they were defamed, bullied, and threatened. And it's not just county employees who are experiencing a toxic environment. Cochise County overall seems to have become a hotbed of toxic behavior. For example, a foul-mouthed bully threatened, physically threatened my husband at the county fair after he illegally took pictures in a public building, most notably of the American flag flying upside down with the Confederate flag flying over the Arizona flag above the Trump booth. A man rushed out of the booth and attempted to grab my husband's phone. He then called my husband several profane names, threatened to physically harm him, and dared my husband to take a photo of him with his middle finger raised. That photo in our possession shows a little girl standing nearby witnessing his threats, his profanity, at what was supposed to be a family-friendly event. Then we heard a string of lies. The fair manager claimed that my husband had entered the Trump booth and was harassing people. The fair manager said that the bully had identified my husband as being a volunteer at another booth in that same building. None of this is true. My husband never entered the Trump booth, nor did he harass anyone. We were just two citizens who paid to enter the fair and were observing the exhibits. The fair's hired security men witnessed my husband being threatened by the foul-mouthed bully and offered no protection. They said that the fair manager had directed them to escort my husband out. When I said that was not fair, they told me it was above their pay grade to evaluate right from wrong. They were just following orders. Witnesses reported to us that the same foul-mouthed bully soon walked down to the Democratic booth, yelling and accusing two women of being pedophile commies. The security officers, according to the witnesses, were also there when this happened, but they did not tell the bully to leave the fair. I'm a native-born resident of Cochise County. I visited the fair all through my childhood, and I've always loved the fair. But I feel differently now. Lies about my husband, an honest man who is faculty emeritus at Cochise College, were perpetuated here at the last Board of Supervisors meeting during call to the public. Yes, right here in our county government complex, where our last two election directors were also defamed, threatened, and bullied. Is this who people in Cochise County have become? Toxic, lying bullies? Come on, people. Stand up for the truth. Stand up for justice. Stand up for the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I wonder if events that happen at the fair are actually matters which the Board of Supervisors has control over. And I believe I have expressed compassion to Mr. Sturgis.
Okay. Now we are going to hear from Jeff Sturgis.
Hello, my name is Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I need to make something quite clear to everyone who is listening. Two speakers at the last regular Board of Supervisors meeting engaged in character defamation. Radford Hyde and Kara Harris both made false public statements in attempts to harm my reputation and discredit me. Spoken defamation is legally considered slander. In addition, the slanderous statements made by Radford Hyde and Kara Harris are published and on record because of the Board of Supervisors meetings are recorded, and the meeting agendas are online for the public to read. Yes, I have learned about the laws involving slander and defamation of character. Under the law, a person who has been slandered can seek damages from the perpetrators. And yes, to be clear, I have contacted a law firm specializing in defamation and slander. Slander can occur when statements are made with negligence as to determining their truth. That is, if the person speaking should have verified statements that they have read or heard elsewhere. Both Radford Hyde and Kara Harris made statements claiming that I had been expelled from the Cochise County Fair for harassing people inside the Trump booth. One thing is true. I was unfairly and unreasonably told I must leave the fair. However, the statements made by Radford Hyde and Kara Harris that I harassed anyone are absolutely false. The exact opposite is true. While I was well outside of the Trump booth in the public walkway between booths of various types, I was a victim of attempted robbery, physical intimidation, and threats of harm by a man who rushed out of the Trump booth and into the public walkway. I do not have time at this venue to give the details of this ugly incident, which my wife touched upon, but Radford Hyde and Kara Harris seemed gleefully to repeat the outright lie that I committed harassment. Radford Hyde and Kara Harris did not start the lie. That started at the fair, but they perpetrated that lie. Neither Radford Hyde nor Kara Harris witnessed the incident. The only reasonable motive for them to repeat this lie in public forum was an attempt to publicly embarrass me and discredit what I have to say at Board of Supervisors meetings. I may decide not to go forward with legal action if Radford Hyde and Kara Harris make public apologies in ways that reveal a sincere effort to clear my name of the public accusations that they hurled at me during the last Board of Supervisors call to the public. We'll see.
Thank you. So the next speaker is Joni Gaia Camino. Giacomo, you say that.
My name is Joni Giacomo, and I live in Bisbee, Arizona. I was listening to the recording of the September 26th meeting and was amazed at the statements regarding incidents at the Cochise County Fair. The speaker spoke despairingly of Jeff Sturgis and his so-called misbehavior, but neither witnessed the incident. If one does not witness it directly, why are you making comments? I am speaking out because I too was at the fair for four days. I met many people of many parties and had some very enlightening conversations from all parties. I met many new people and got to touch base with people I hadn't seen for years. So as Paul Harvey used to say, and now for the rest of the story. Up until Saturday night, my fair experience was a great time and productive. Just like the Republican booth, we too experienced many people stopping by to sign our petitions and to discuss current events. There were even Republicans that chose to discuss politics and their reasons for supporting the issues the way they do. I had some great conversations and was able to gather information on other people's views and beliefs. Those people that chose to stop and talk were very respectful and eager to talk. It was a great to have civil conversation in a time of such incivility. It was not until the gentleman from the booth where the so-called disruption occurred came running down the aisle toward our booth did the evening take a distasteful turn. I was sitting in the aisle talking to another Democratic volunteer about the supposed incident at the other booth when the booth worker came running past me as I was sitting. He spun around less than 10 feet from me and screamed at my face that I supported a communist child molester. Directly behind him was a security guard doing nothing to prevent his aggressive behavior. I was quite shocked and looked at the security guard with my palms up. But he just smiled and continued following the man into the next building. The guy from the booth then turned around, came charging back down the aisle, this time continuing without interaction until he and the security guard were past my booth. This is when I found out that the guy that just verbally accosted me was the guy complaining about Jeff Sturgis. I found a security officer and asked why the guy from the other booth was still at the fair when he was behaving aggressively. I was told to go to the office to discuss it with them. I went to the office, proceeded to talk to the administrators in the office, explaining what happened. I was told that this was the first time that they heard about the guy's behavior. I told them that the two that were removed were not booth volunteers but friends that had stopped by to talk and sign petitions. They had been incorrectly identifi-, sorry, identified as Democratic volunteers, which apparently led to the threat to the Democratic booth of potential removal from the fair. This threat made with incomplete information. I again informed the lady in the office that the booth volunteers did not do anything aggressive, but the guy in the end booth had, and why was he still allowed to stay at the fair when the other two were asked to leave based on incomplete information? That's it?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. So the next speaker is Renee Benet. And I probably got that wrong, too. She's, she's here. Benet? Or Beno? Benoit. Like target, Targe.
This is interesting. This has been interesting so far. Can you? I'm tall, so can you hear me all right? I speak loud. I used to be a teacher, so I probably can project.
If you could start with your name and address.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, I just have a couple of things that I want to talk about briefly. The first one is one day in-person only voting, which I do not support whatsoever. Um, and as you know, and as everybody assembled in this room knows, that early voting and mail-in ballots are protected under the law. So even discussing this is a moot point. Most Arizona voters use early voting and mailing ballots, so there you go. Most voters in the presidential election cast ballots early, but mostly by mail. So why are we making it harder to vote by even considering this? I think this is ridiculous. So you guys aren't allowed to ignore the law, okay? I know you know this. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the vote centers. And I do not support anything in any way that makes it harder to vote. As a matter of fact, what I do support is making it easier to vote. Because we already have a problem in this country with people, the, the, the poll numbers going down and down with people not voting. We need more people to vote, not less. As you know, and everybody assembled in this room knows, that voters overwhelmingly prefer to choose where they want to vote. So don't make it harder for the voters to vote. I say emphatically that you must make it as easy as possible for people to vote. I can't understand how anybody could argue with this. Then and only then do you know what the true will of the voters is, right? So keep the vote centers we have. Changing things will just add to confusion and make it harder and more frustrating for people to vote. It also costs money that we need for more pressing matters like border security. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I identified myself. I'm Renee Benoit from Herford. There you go.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tamara Birch.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, my name is Tammy Birch, Tamara Birch. I'm from Bisbee, Arizona, and a dedicated believer in every vote counts. And thank you, Board of Supervisors, and all employees, and all people in the audience and listening for considering what I have to say. I feel very unprepared today because my computer didn't work and kind of discombobulated. So I'll say what I'm saying. It's a little disjointed. Thank you for your patience. So basically, my concerns are about the Elections Department and the procedures that will be followed for upcoming elections. I'm concerned about so many changes in the amount of people that are quitting our Elections Department or the Director, how the procedures, how they're going to employ someone and what the questions are in the check-in of their qualifications. But just going around lately, I'm getting petitions signed and asking how many people are voters and have you ever been a poll worker? I realize my concern really is the ability to train all the poll workers and to make sure that they will feel safe and not threatened being there. Most of the poll workers and the volunteers are in their 60s or up to 80s. And it's a long, long day, and I'm just afraid. People that have been doing it for years told me, oh, I'm not going to do it now. I don't want to even be there. And where are we going to get the qualified workers? And where are we, who's going to train them? So I'm really concerned about that. We know that the Board of Supervisors makes very many important decisions, but they are under the purvey and they have to follow state laws and procedures. And thank goodness we have lawyers here, and most of them do their homework. I'm just worried about the toxic environment. People have spoken about the early mail-in ballots, how important it is. And my understanding is that we do have the 17 vote centers that that was already approved prior to why it was on the later board agenda. I have no idea versus the 55 precincts. So maybe we're going to add some more vote centers. That's fine with me, but we should never go back to 55 precincts. We don't have the people to work that or the monies to accomplish that economically efficiently. All right. So thank you so much for listening to me. I hope I wasn't too babbling. And God bless America.
Thank you. That concludes our call to the public. Is that correct? Did I forget someone?
I signed up for-
Someone else signed up too online. Can, can we check that, Melissa?
It's okay, ma'am. We have it.
We have it. Maybe I missed you. Sometimes there's a stack. People will talk to me about how I'm fiddling around with papers up here. That's because sometimes I just, and yours was there, this long one. Okay, Sally Carpenter, would you please approach the stand?
Thank you, Supervisors. Thank you. I just have one thing to say. I lived in Washington State for a million years. I retired happily to here. I love it here. And I am so impressed and so happy at the voting system here. And what you're doing now is absolutely fabulous. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. There is someone online. Could we check for their application or their, their request?
The person say their name, please. We just see a phone number.
This is Ann Carl. I signed up for a call to the public as well. I think I emailed it in time. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. We're looking.
Yeah, we are. Sometimes when we have more than one meeting, that gives you a few extra minutes. But, but as you might expect, we're all busy in here at the time, so not reading our emails.
It's the difference when they wait till the last minute.
We all needed a chance to breathe anyway. Okay.
We're not seeing anything, so.
Ms. Carl, they're not finding anything on, on this today. So we're going to go ahead and move, move on, and I apologize for that.
I see it in my mailbox. I did send it at the time. For whatever reason, it didn't go out, but I sent it before 10 o'clock. So hopefully that will count.
Call Cox.
We haven't received it, and I apologize for that. We will catch you next time and the next time and the next time, as many times as you want to speak. But today, we do not have your paperwork, and I apologize. Have a great day. Our first items are consent agenda items 1 through 4. I'm sorry. I was not coming out.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda items 1, 2, 4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. We will begin today with a couple of public hearings. Item number five is a Series 10 Beer and Wine Liquor License, and I need a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Series 10 Beer and Wine New Liquor License applications submitted by Francisco Javier Romero for Dollar General Store Number 22613, located at 95 St. In-Styway 92, Herford, Arizona 85615.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on that. And so anyone in the audience or listening may have a chance to speak. But first, we'll have a description of this by Laura Lowenheim, and she's our Deputy Clerk of the Board.
Madam Chair, members of the Board,
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is for a new Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license application submitted for Dollar General store number 22613 located at 9527 East Highway 92 in Hereford. The application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes have been paid on the parcel. The notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protests were received. The applicant has paid the $100 processing fee and board staff is recommending approval.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item, number five? Hearing done.
Madam Chair, you do have a speaker request form from.
Oh, I do. Item number five. Okay, I have someone in person, item number five. That is Rebecca Allen Jones.
Good morning. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Good morning to all of you supervisors. I'm Rebecca Allen Jones from Happy Valley Road in Glendale, Arizona. I've submitted handouts via email. I understand Mr. Romero requested a liquor license for $2 Generals, which are up for review today. I want to appeal to you that there's been an oversight regarding the Miracle Valley location, which should prevent this license from being granted. I've spoken with Development Services regarding their recommendation on this matter. And I can see that this license appears to be a reasonable request from their perspective regarding planning and zoning limitations, which they don't seem to find a conflict, and this appears to be correct. However, they don't have the full picture. And I have also spoken with the title company, the records office, the assessors office regarding this matter. My great-grandpa founded this town, and as you know, I'm a historian with extensive understanding of this town. My nonprofit organization very recently purchased land in this town. Both historically and currently, it's known that anyone who purchases land within this area, that restrictions were established as the town was established. This made national news in 1959. This year, we had to sign our contract with the agreement that we would not sell, store, or dispense wine, liquor, beer, or any alcohol beverage on our property. This same restriction exists for all the properties that make up the bulk of the town, especially all those which are adjacent to this property where the license is being requested. The Development Services Department believes that because they've reviewed only the permitting and zoning requirements and found a conflict, that this means that all that is needed is to be reviewed and it's all good. However, they've overlooked that the town has a legal restriction on this side of the highway. And when I looked into this with the title company, they did say, wow, we've overlooked something here. And I can see why this has been overlooked in the process because it is a very unusual circumstance. I want to ask you to table this and do the appropriate research regarding this particular liquor license to ensure that nothing is done inappropriately because that restriction does make it very clear that any future changes would not be approvable. And this is documentation that wasn't reviewed in the process of making a recommendation. So I just want to encourage you guys to please not make a hasty decision here without all the facts which appear to have not been reviewed appropriately. Thank you for your time.
So hearing that, is there any discussion by the board?
Yeah, question. It's a legal question. It sounds as though she's asking us to implement something that is, in my mind, similar to an HOA or something that is with the property, and that's out of our purview. Am I incorrect about that? She's bringing up an issue that I guess she could sue about it, but.
I don't have enough information to give you an informed opinion on that. I don't know what regulations she's referring to.
But that isn't in the town.
I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I don't have any of that information in front of me that I've reviewed to make an informed decision on. What I can say is that it does sound like it is a private matter, if there was some type of private restriction similar to an HOA. But without having, I would be committing malpractice to make a comment on something I haven't seen.
Well, it isn't something that normally we look at. Have they paid the taxes? We look at, you know, the situations that are on our list. And so I think that what we should do is make a decision based on the list that we have used with all the other properties that come to us. And the one that she's bringing up is not on the list.
And then I would like to say also that the CCNRs or whatever it is that restricted that, that should have been handled in the initial sale and the level of that. And so maybe this would have never come forward had that been caught in the title company. But I don't see why we can't table it. So I'm in a kind of that moderate position here. So I would like you to be able to see the actual document and be able to actually make a statement at some point.
We should get involved in this.
I don't even know if there's a document that exists. I don't know if it's something that the county even has a vested interest in. What I do know is that the county has specific criteria, as Supervisor Wilson just said, that we follow in those cases. And if we're following that criteria, then I think that's appropriate.
And we've met the criteria?
Yes. Like I say, we, our office has contacted the same people that we always contact when someone comes to us with a beer or wine license. So I think that it's progress for us to go ahead and act. And if she feels that there are other issues, then I believe that's a private matter.
And this is an interesting situation too, because when we give a beer or wine license, this is just permission for it to go to the state. So at some point, there's still a review. So we are just saying, okay, they've met all our criteria. It will be reviewed at the state level as well with the department there.
Certainly. We don't give out beer and wine lists.
Yeah, yeah.
We do go through and say, have they paid their taxes? Have they, you know, this is and this, so.
Okay, so this is kind of a first step. I'm satisfied with that. Is there any other comments? Okay, hearing no other comments. We have a motion and a second. I'm going to close the public hearing on that item. And we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number six. Have a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a Series 10 beer and wine new liquor license application submitted by Francisco Javier Romero for Dollar General store number 21406 located at 2295 North Highway 90, Ouachita City, Arizona 85616.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to open the public hearing and also hear from Ms. Laura Lowenheim, deputy clerk of the board.
Madam Chair, members of the board, again, this application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protests were received. The applicant has paid the $100 processing fee and board staff is recommending approval.
Is there any public for this item? Hearing done. I'm going to close the public hearing. Now we're going to vote on this item.
I just think that we need, I want to make a statement that it isn't up to me or even the board to decide whether people want to drink beer or wine. And I understand that that is problematic for some people. But we're here to ask that people follow the processes that are necessary in order for these things to take place. So while, you know, they do not want it in their neighborhood, I think that it's. If there was an established church, there are reasons that it can't be next to it. But other than that, you know, we need to follow the procedures, and so that's what we're doing here, not making moral decisions.
Okay. Well, like I said, it's going to follow on up through the state, and these decisions are made. The final decision's made there, the license given there. So I have a motion and, oh, hearing no more. Did I close the public hearing? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. We have one action item today, that's facilities. And Mr. Darryl Crowley is here to describe it. If we can have a motion as he approaches the dais.
Madam Chair, I move we approve proposal 7349199 with Train US Inc. for the replacement of one heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC unit at 1415 Melody Lane, Building F, in the amount of $119,711 effective October 10th, 2023.
I'll second the motion.
And we have a motion and a second, and if you could please.
Again, this. Is this fact being replaced? They're well over their age of youth on the ASAP?
I have a question.
Mr. Crowley, sorry.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
The question is. I know we've had one other of these, but why are these heating and cooling units coming to the board for approval? Isn't there an amount of money that's put into that department to use for improvements that need to be made? And I don't, I just have a curiosity as to why that now has risen to the board level of whether we buy this train unit or not? What's happened that caused this all to start happening?
So we do, and it is budgeted for these improvements. However, there's a certain threshold of a dollar amount. And when it's $119,000, we bring that to the board. So for the approval, the threshold is over $50,000. So if anything reaches over that amount, and this being unique and the dollar amount, we do bring it to the board for additional approval. But there is a lot of dollar amount.
And Supervisor English, if I can just add to that comment. I believe that $50,000 threshold dollar amount was set many years ago.
I know.
Things were a lot deeper. So if the board would like to, you know, consider raising that threshold, that can be an agenda item that, you know, comes before the board and you can increase that approval. But right now, that's what it's set at, 50,000.
Well, I think that we need to look at that because the reason I brought it up is because Mr. Crowley has been sitting here since we started our meetings at 10 o'clock this morning in order to bring to us this issue. And that's not a very good use of time.
Thank you. I approve of that. Like, we can't vote here, but let's discuss raising that threshold to at least reflect the cost that has risen. And we all know 50,000 doesn't, isn't the same as it used to be.
We could have also, every basis.
Yes.
Oh, it's okay. We could have also had this agenda item first or fifth or something.
Well.
Anyway, thank you.
We could have moved it. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
No, we heard a brief from Mr. Crowley just the other day about expenses and HVAC.
So having concluded discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Well, our next item on the agenda is a report by Mr. Richard Karwatsky, County Administrator.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Supervisor English, Supervisor Crosby. I did want to inform the public as well as the board that we've been working on this fraud reporting button that people can use internally for our employees. So we're ready to launch that. There will be a flyer that I'll present to you guys shortly. In the next week or so, we'll send out an email to all county employees. They can click on the link in the email. They can scan the QR code. This will be at every workplace in the county. They could also click on the Intranet, which is only for county employees to report fraud. Also, on ADP Workforce Now, there will be a fraud button. So if they see fraud, waste, or abuse, they can report those. And also, they can do that anonymously. So they can make that report, and then we'll can review what those actions are. So we are there. This was a recommendation. That's 65th North. Recommended. We're going through the processes, so we're ready to implement it. So the next week or so, that'll be an option.
All right, thank you. District 1 pass. District 2.
I do have a couple of things this time. I was in Douglas this morning at the American Legion, and they're having a Veterans Expo today. They have 70 vendors that have showed up to have offered services to the veterans that come to them today. Glad to notice that the Cochise County Health Department was there. And the other thing I wanted to report on is the fact that I had the honor of going to the ribbon cutting of the McNeil Solar. And the reason that's important is because it's also battery storage, and those are new technologies. And we have it now in Cochise County on Central Highway. And it was put in by SSVEC. For those of you that don't know, SSVEC started within a mile of where this operation is now going live. And it will be serving 3,000 homes. SSV started out with 46 customers. And now this will be, this one unit will be serving 3,000 homes. So that's really a boon for, I think, for Cochise County, and we all need to be proud of that. So that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. I don't have any report particularly for my district, but I've been watching that go up and knew from the beginning it was SSVEC and also knew the history and the origins, having been here my whole life. And I really appreciated seeing that and knowing that it was our own company. I am not averse to companies coming in and providing solar opportunities in the area to get solar power online. But I particularly appreciated that, being our own hometown boys building that. So that was really exciting for me. Okay, that is the end of the meeting. Our next meeting is today at 11 o'clock in the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room for a special board meeting and possible executive session.
Since it's after 11.
Oh, yes.
Maybe you should put a five-minute break or something before we.
10-minute break, 11:15. Okay, this meeting's adjourned.